To bring that up to code. And he even told me that the code enforcer said that he's done a great job. He's done what was asked of him. Now, because he has, it would be a shame for him to lose all that money he put into it. And again, he said, he did tell you all, he does raise his son. He, there's no reason why he should lose his money. And he started out with more raggedy cars. He really has improved the cars. He has made that lot look better. And even, as he said, he works real hard. He is an honest man. He's not a criminal. There is no criminal activity on his property. That boy works hard, and I know it, because I am his mother. I've seen him throughout life. He's a good son. He works hard, and to deprive him of trying to be independent, I think that would be a shame. Just wanted to put that in there.
Like, less than two minutes. Just less than two, that's it. I'm gonna make it real quick.
Okay. Okay. And when y'all, when y'all gave us the conditional use, Scales Auto Sales, the lot that I'm on
right now, it was pretty bad looking. I came out of my own pocket, you know, paid people, they remodeled the place, repainted, tore down the fences, because I knew we had, like, finished that lease. So I came out of my own pocket to make the place look as best as I can make it look until the lease was over.
When's the lease over?
Like, the end of August.
All right, I'll let Ms. Robinson and Ms. Taylor.
My comment is that, you know, we're not trying to, or purposely, knock you out of business, or keep you from making money. When you appeared before this city council, I asked the question, are you going to have two lots? And you told me only one. I looked at Alderman Taylor, and I said, Alderman Taylor? You know, to have some comments on it. And Alderman Taylor explained to all of us, because, see, I did not vote for the car lot. I do not vote for used car lots. Okay? So, but Alderman Taylor assured this body that there was only going to be one car lot. And there ended up being two car lots. Now, despite how the lot looks now, up until last month, or before, it was a mess. With a truck with the hood up and the door open, I considered that a safety issue for kids, sitting right there on Hazel Street, near where the church is. It was on that lot. But the hood was up and the door was open. And you appeared before us, and you indicated that you wanted to change lots, because people were stealing your cars off that lot. They were stealing your cars, and that you admitted, we're gonna move it. Now, in my mind, if your contract was to go to August 2010, you should have known that, and you should have shared that with us. There has been wrecked cars on that lot. There have, I mean, regardless of what the pictures show tonight, regardless of what they showed yesterday, you know, even on the fenced-in lot, that lot has not necessarily been in compliance. Now, it may be in compliance now, but it has not been, and you all were before us in August. So, my comment is, it should have been taken care of back when you told us you were gonna take care of it.
With all due respect, ma'am, if there's a problem, and like I say, the North Little Rock City Code can tell you, if someone says, "Do something," I do it. If you have a problem, you say, "Hey, this is a problem." It's done. It gets fixed. It's not, "Hey, there's a problem, we're gonna crucify him." No, if there's a problem, let me know. I'm gonna fix it. I'm the easiest person to work with. Whatever you need done, I do it.
Tell him what's gonna happen when your lease is up.
Can I say one, one thing to address?
Bill?
Ms. Robinson? I understand where you're coming from, but the situation that Cheedy was presented with was, when he did go to Mr. Scales, it would have been, Cheedy would have had to break a legal binding contract. Okay? And he, he put himself in a position where he could get sued for doing that. Had he known that, I'm sure he would have shared that with you. But he thought he could just walk up and say, "Hey, I'm, I'm gone. I'm moving next door. The council gave us conditional zoning. We're going next door." I don't think anybody in this council would break a contract, not purposely. And Cheedy put forth the effort and the due diligence to ask the man, "Could I get out early?" In fact, even on a couple occasions, as recent as two weeks ago, Cheedy agreed. Ms. Taylor said, "If you'll move on to the lot, I'll sign for you a monument sign to keep you in code. You move off that corner lot, onto Les' lot, move all those cars out of there in 30 days, okay? And everything will be okay." Cheedy had already made up his mind that he would go to Mr. Scales with those conditions and say, "Whether you sue me or not, if you want to sue me for it, I understand. I'm breaking the contract, but I'll pay the rest of the time and not have anything on your lot to sell. That's how bad I want to keep the lot next door." So, I'm asking for some consideration there. The man, you're asking the man to break the contract. I don't think anybody on, on the bench would say, you know, "Yeah, that's the right thing to do. It's not the right thing to do." I would get after him if he broke my contract.
Mr. Taylor?
It would be the right thing to do if, if I gave somebody my word that I was gonna do something, even if I have to break that contract, or even if I have to pay that lease out, I would do what I said I was gonna do. But the, the reason we're here tonight is because the lot is a mess. Those pictures was taken on the, the 17th of March. I took pictures yesterday, tires on flat, there was a truck that was sitting out there with, with the hood up, two cars on flat.
That's a mess? Two flat tires and a hood up on a truck?
Well, you know, I've, I've, I've been to thousands of car lots, thousands of them. I've been to thousands of car lots. And car lots that I go to to look for cars, they don't have cars on flats. They don't have, the hoods up, and they don't have wrecked cars and pickup trucks full of trash.
So, so you're telling me, on my property, I cannot raise a hood on any vehicle? Now, on the, the car that you said, it's two cars, the tires on flat, and it's one on one car, one on the other. It's aftermarket wheels. What it is, is right where the tire butts up to it, the chrome goes bad right there. That's the water rust and the chrome goes bad. So, you air 'em up, they're gonna still go back down. The only way to fix that is either probably taking it to a shop and re-chrome it. I don't sell the cars that high. If, if I say, "This car is $1,000," it's $1,000. If I go add another $250 into it, it's not gonna, nobody gonna say, "Well, hey, you fixed that rim, so we gotta get another," you know, I put that $250 on top of it. So the customer has the option. I let them know, you know, "Well, this car's just $1,000, but you can fix that rim. This, it's gotta leak." And I, you know, tell them the conditions of why that tire goes down. But aftermarket wheels, chrome wheels, they do that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Well, I, I, I paid for one of those wheels be fixed on one of my personal cars, so I knew it can't be done. So, I mean, if, if you're trying to, if you're trying to comply with the ordinance that says that you will have no inoperable vehicles and no wrecked vehicles, then you spend the money to get the wheel fixed. Instead of, instead of me and myself and Alderman Robinson driving by there every single day, looking at, at you not being in compliance when you said that you would be.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Ms. Taylor, Ms. Robinson, what, what are you gonna do with this, this ordinance? You gonna call it now? Or do you?
I'm ready to call it.
Debbie has.
Okay. Ms. Debbie?
Well, I just wanna say, when you were here in September, and we asked you and everything, I did believe that that was your lot, the lot that you were on at the time, and that you wanted to move over to that lot. And therefore, we were going to get rid of one junky car lot, is basically. And that's the reason that I voted for that, you know, for the conditional use when, in September. Later, I find out that that wasn't your lot, that you worked for someone there. I mean, I, I did. I think you were, did represent, misrepresent yourself to us. And so, I was just wondering, was there some reason, or is the owner, who is the owner of that lot?
Mr. Scales, but when I, when I came to y'all, like I said, I'm not technically the owner, but it's mine. I'm saying, without me, there is no Scales Auto Sales. I do everything. He doesn't, he's not even in the car business anymore. Like I said, I'm the manager, I'm the, I go out and buy the cars. I do all the work. I do everything.
Okay. Do you still have, I mean, those are still your cars, though, on the?
They're, yeah.
I'm calling it old lot and new lot, okay? But on, on the old lot, those are still yours? Because I was there, I went by Friday and looked, and there's cars there that, you know, flats, and there's inoperable cars on that lot. And I know that's not the lot we're looking at. We're only looking at the rezoning on this lot. I just, I don't know, I, I thought that you would make more of an effort to clean that lot up, knowing that this was up. I, I don't understand that.
I did, but the thing is this, I can't do business on this lot. I mean, I can't, it's, you know, I couldn't get my son to actually open up and do business over there.
Okay. So here's a question. If this was passed tonight, how soon would you have everything moved out of that other lot?
We were looking at a month.
It would take a month to move everything over and get rid of everything? Now, what happened, now, here's another question. So that lot, it remains a used car lot that can be leased out to someone else, is that correct, Mr. Carter?
I'm not aware of what the current zoning is. If that's a non-conforming use, you have to consult with the planning director.
Okay. Is anybody, is, is Mr. Boles here?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Boles?
Yes.
I hear you.
I wanna ask him.
Sorry?
Mr. Boles, do you know what the current zoning is that?
C4.
The, the, the old lot. I'm calling the old lot and the new lot. The old lot.
Okay. All of Broadway has C4 zoning. In 2005, we required conditional use review when you start up a car lot that's been idle for 12 months. So, we've gone through this because he's starting up at a new location.
So, if Mr. Cheedy moves to the other lot, that, then they, they, that another lot can go in there, at the current, at the old lot, correct?
We believe so. I mean, that's a legal question.
Because that's not in here's name, it's still under someone else's name, so it hasn't actually changed names.
It's an ongoing operation.
Okay.
But Mr. Scales works for United States Post Office full-time, and he has no desire to be in the car business.
But he could lease it out.
I guarantee that he wouldn't.
Right.
But there's a very, very strong possibility that he's not going to.
Okay. Mr. Cheedy, on this new lot, I mean, you're not gonna be doing any kind of work on these cars?
No, I have another location for that.
But you have another location that you take the cars to work on, then? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because when I drove by Friday, I mean, I really didn't see that many violations. I was looking for violations. I mean, on the old lot, I did. The new one?
No, I, I mean, I do everything like I'm supposed to over there. Like I say, if Les calls me, if somebody says, "Hey, you got a flat tire," I go check on it. And, you know, I do air it up. But, like I said, on the ones that are the aftermarket chrome wheels, they do have a slow leaking. Within three to four days, you know, it's gonna go, get back low. But that's, I mean, that's about it. Anytime someone says, "Do something," I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions in the council? Ms. Hyde?
Is Mr., is Mr. Wadley here? Or representative from the code enforcement? I just wanna clear something up in my own mind, please.
And, and to add insult to injury, this, the new lot has been in violation of state law since, since, since we passed the ordinance, because he's supposed to have, there's supposed to be a sign out there that states the name of his business, and it's a used car dealership. And there is no sign that says that he's a used car dealership.
That's why he can't sell cars off of that lot, is because of the sign. If we can get the sign problem fixed, he'll be selling cars off of that lot, not off the other lot.
But he could have been, he could have been, the sign problem could have been fixed from when he opened the lot. The, by ordinance, he can have a monument sign. So he could have been here at the sign from day one.
Actually, Maurice, I talked to Mr. Taylor about that, and that's what actually took so long, because he said that he was gonna give me that sign, that, that pre-existing sign, and he was gonna get grandfathered in. And then, I don't know what happened. And I told him, that's the only thing that was stopping me from opening up. That's actually what got us here today, was what made it, you know, take so long for me to take action and do what I was supposed to do. That's the only reason Scales is still here, because how can I do business without it?
Well, I can tell you exactly what Ms. Taylor said. Mr. Taylor said, "When is the other lot gonna close?" And you said, "I don't know." And I said, "Well, if you don't know when the other lot is gonna close, I don't know when I'm gonna sponsor, sponsor legislation for a sign on the other lot." That's exactly what I said to you.
Okay. Mr. West, I think Mr. Wadley was standing behind y'all, and Mr. Hyde had asked a question, asked for, asked to ask him a question, so.
And then, just clearing, I'm trying to clear some things up here. All right. In September of last year, we approved a conditional use for this lot, with these conditions that I'm looking at here, A through J, correct?
Correct.
All right. And Plant, and Robert Boles, are you out there? Planning, did Planning go out and inspect this lot and sign off that he had met all the conditions?
Sean Spencer went out, yes, and confirmed that conditions had been met.
Okay. And that, that was as of September the 28th, or somewhere, somewhere around September, end of September of last year.
After, a month after that or something.
Okay. Since that period of time, Mr. Wadley, have you written any citations to that gentleman of violations of any of the conditional uses on that lot?
On this particular lot, no, we haven't.
Oh, you have not?
We're, we're putting off any prosecution until we settle this, what, whatever matter. If he continue, we have not done any citations yet.
Okay.
That's not to say that there's any violations we have not prosecuted yet.
Okay. So you haven't notified him of any violations at this point?
Not yet.
Under normal circumstances, would you notify? If someone is breaking code, if they're not in compliance, if they fall out of compliance, would you normally notify them by, via a citation or some type of ticket?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if you haven't written any citations out there, or you haven't notified him of any code violations, then where are we then?
As in?
As, as him being notified that he needs to clean up that lot, or he needs to bring some of the conditions of that lot back into compliance. We haven't notified him, is that correct?
Not, no, sir. We have not notified him of any violations, other than what this, what they're addressing now, that I would assume that he is aware of, because y'all are trying to revoke those violations. He knows what, he would obviously know what violations he is in, in regards to the special use that y'all are addressing now.
So, what violations is he in, in, what conditions is he in violation of?
If he has any inoperable vehicles there at this time, he would be in violation of it.
Okay. And, and at this point, has he been notified of any of the inoperable vehicles?
I haven't. I would have to ask my code officer if his visitor's with him, but, I mean, I personally have not.
Okay. So if we were to notify him tonight, would it be fair, Mr. Carter, that we could give him X number of days to clean that lot up, and then suffer, or else suffer the consequences?
There's always more than one way to handle a problem. And one way is definitely through the citation and prosecution method of, of addressing violations. The other is an administrative remedy to revoke the permit that was given. Both are valid responses to non-compliance.
But normally, we usually go the, the first option, don't we? If someone's in violation of code, we notify them of that. And then give them X number of days, or weeks, or months to clear it up?
As far as how many days, or weeks, or months are given to somebody to, to clear up a problem, I mean, that's, that's usually the, within the discretion of whoever the citing officer is. Normally, once the ticket's written and it's filed with the court, then it goes through the prosecution process.
Okay.
You know, we show up in court, and the judge disposes of it the way he thinks is just. But either remedy is prob, is permissible. And I might add, we went through the citation phase last year, when we issued him nine citations for three different properties on Broadway.
Since September the 28th?
Now, this was his, this was other lots that he had, not this one, last year, that he had, that we know of, three separate lots that we asked him to clean up, that he didn't, and that we prosecuted him of.
Okay. The lot in question, though, is owned by Mr. Seville, though, is that correct?
That's the new lot, I believe.
Yeah. On this legislation, correct? The one that's owned by Mr. Seville. And, and he has not been notified of any violations on this particular lot?
I would have to ask my code officer to, before I could, I have not, but I would have to ask my code officer personally.
Oh, I can answer that for you.
Excuse me, Mr. Taylor. Go, go ahead.
Absolutely, he was notified. He was notified by, 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 he was certain, given notice from the city attorney's office that your lot, that you own, was in, was in violation of your conditional use. And we've, we've held this legislation for almost two months to, and trying to give him, I guess, the process to defend himself. And, and finally, when, when he knows it's gonna be called, then they're here to defend themselves. But the bottom line is, Alderman Robinson and myself, we are working diligently to clean up these Broadway. And if we don't start putting teeth behind these, the legislation that, that we pass to make people abide by them, it's just gonna go on, and on, and on, and on, and we will never get it cleaned up. Because, you know, if, if, if there's, if you can, if you can just, just run them up and do what you wanna do, and nothing's gonna happen, then, you know, why, I mean, why don't we put conditions on them? Just, just say, "You can have a lot," or "You can have a business and do whatever you wanna do."
Alderman Hyde, could I, could I?
Mr. Seville, if you don't mind. Mr. Baggett, if you got a question?
If he has this car sitting out there, and the, it goes, the flat, the tires go flat overnight, and code office comes by, you can write him a ticket? Just, all you have to do is just see it. Even though it's been just sitting there overnight, if it's inoperable, if the tire's flat, even though it just went down overnight, you can write him a ticket. How long had it been sitting there with the flat tires on it and?
Which time? It's one, it's one on flat right now. Right now.
There's actually two there that have flats on them right now.
Okay. Excuse me. Two, right now.
But they're not inoperable?
You mean to tell me, a car that's so flat is, is operable?
Well, in less than five minutes, they could put air in the tire and drive the car.
It's either operable, or it's not.
Okay. I think we've reached a point where we need to call the legislation. I'm sorry.
My one question is, you said that any cars that are on Mr. Seville's lot, if they need any repair, you do it off-site. How many cars can your off-site location handle at any given time? What's the maximum number of cars you would have off that lot being worked on? That you can handle at your other location?
Um, uh, 400? 500?
So, so there would never be an inoperable car?
No, it's, I mean, the place is huge.
I mean, on the lot, in Mr. Seville's lot, there would never be a car, need to be a car on there that was inoperable at any time?
No. Now, see, inoperable, when I was told by code, if you can't get in that car, turn that key, in case of a fire, you need to be moved. If I get in there and turn the key on the ones where the tires let down, in case of a fire, they still gonna drive away, you know? And, um, I forgot his name, but when they said they cited me and prosecuted me on them three properties, I went to court on those three properties, and a judge and a lawyer, you know, thanked, thanked me for being, you know, getting it taken care of, within the five, I won't say about, it's been about, it was about a week, and I moved all them vehicles. I didn't know that you couldn't store vehicles inside a fence. I just put, you know, tarp all the way around it. No one ever told me that. So as soon as they told me, they never gave me warning, they just said, you know, "Well, we couldn't catch up with you, so we're just gonna write you these tickets." They wrote me their tickets. I went to court, the judge thanked me, you know, and the lawyer thanked me, and said, you know, "You did a wonderful job. We wish we had more people like you." And that was it. I didn't have to pay a penny. They said, "You did a great job, you know, go ahead on." And that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
Nope.
We're gonna call?
Nope. I have a question. Nope.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
Okay. One more question. Uh, Mr. Spencer did sign off that this, that all conditions had been met in November 2nd of '09. I had that on there. And that's when Mr. Cheedy got his business license. My question is, if we approve this revocation of this, do you remain on the lot that you're currently on, on the old lot? I wanna know what happens then.
I told, like, when we had the meeting?
He didn't understand the question.
I do.
He understood the question.
Okay.
They revoke?
If we revoke your special use here, what, what do you do? Are you gonna stay on the old lot?
Got nowhere else to go.
Okay. Okay.
We just asked for the council to give him a chance to go to the other lot. I think you've listened. He's sincere. I just asked the council, don't be any hurt on this. Let it sit for a couple months. Let's, let, she proved to y'all that he is actually a man of his word.
One more question.
Ms. Ross?
If, now, this is, if this is approved, and the conditions are not met in this, how soon could we bring this back up to revoke it?
Okay. When you say, "If this is approved," if this is...
Right, right, wait, I mean, if...
If this is not approved.
If this is not approved, if we do not revoke all his license and everything?
How soon could it be?
And then he, then he falls into violations and everything again. Can we come back and say, "Okay, this is it"?
It could be presented again in the first meeting in April.
Okay.
Okay. Y'all wanna call it?
Please call it.
An ordinance revoking the conditional use for property located at 1222 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, revoking the business license of the business owner operator at said location, terminating electrical services to business location, third and final reading.
Give a motion. Give a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Second? Okay. Mr. Carter?
I'd like to give you one piece of advice before you, before you vote, because we don't normally deal with these a whole lot. Kinda wrote out something that I'd, I'd just like to read to you just very quickly about, about your vote, okay? This action equates to a quasi-judicial determination affecting the rights of persons and property. You need to be aware of that. You should render your decision in this case as you believe a judge would. If, after examining the evidence, the evidence has been presented by the, the holder of the conditional use permit, and the evidence that's been included, and just your common sense as an alderman, you believe that it's more likely than not that the terms of the conditional use permit were violated, then you can certainly vote for this ordinance. Otherwise, you should vote against it. If you do not believe that the terms were violated, then you should vote against it. If you vote to pass this ordinance, the city should take no action while the time for appeal is running, in accordance with District Court Rule 9. So once that time has expired, then we could take the actions as stated in the ordinance. If an appeal is filed, then it'll be under the auspices of the court at that moment. Does anyone have any questions about that?
And he'll be able to operate?
Pending appeal, yes, ma'am.
Regardless, if we, if, if there's a, if we revoke it and he files an appeal, he can continue to operate that car lot?
It's, it's important that we posture ourselves in that manner, because if we, if we cause a business to terminate before the appeals process has run and we were found to be in error, then we could be liable for lost business profits and such as that nature. So if, if there's, if there's an appeal filed, then we should allow the courts to make their determination and, and respect the authority of the court.
Okay.
Is there a chance that if we revoke this, that there's going to be a lawsuit filed?
Oh, yeah.
A certainty. It's a certainty.
A certainty.
When, when you say that a lawsuit is filed, this decision is appealable to Pulaski County Circuit Court. If they don't feel like you made the right factual determination, they can appeal to a Pulaski County judge, just like if you can appeal from any other court.
My, my problem is, I know Mr. Taylor's not unreasonable. I know him. I served with him on the planning commission for three years. I know he's not reasonable, I know he's not taking anything out on anybody or anything like that. I know, I talked with Les the other night, and, but my problem is, if you go buy a car lot and you see cars sitting around with flat tires and stuff, that couldn't be good for business. I mean, you know, I mean, just, you have a place to work on your stuff, you know, to take your car into the garage and replace the tires or whatever needs to be done?
Let me, let me, Mr. Bag, I mean, Alderman Baggett, with the aftermarket wheels, it's terribly expensive to have them fixed, so when the tire loses air because of a bad wheel, Tiddy actually tells the prospective buyer that, look, we keep airing this tire up, it's going to cost $150, $200 for another aftermarket wheel, but I'm not going to put one on it because then you won't pay for it when I sell you the car. So I'm telling you upfront that if you buy this car, you know that that's a bad wheel and you're going to lose air. So that's the only reason that those, whenever you see a flat on any of those lost owners, it's going to be on an aftermarket wheel because it loses air. And usually, after he airs it back up three or four times, he sells the car under those conditions. So the car's not there very long.
Hey, well, that's, I mean, that's part of the business.
That's part of the...
If, if the shear's that I cut hair with get dull, it costs $500 and I have to replace it.
So, that, that's exactly what, when you see a flat tire on a car lot down on Broadway, 99% of the time it's because it's an aftermarket wheel that needs to be replaced.
Because I bought tire fluid kits because, you know, on car lots, sometimes you might get a screw here and a tire might get punctured, so we repair our own tires. But that, we actually can't repair, you have to get it taken somewhere or you have to go search for the aftermarket wheel, and searching for aftermarket wheel is like searching for a needle in a haystack, because you don't know the manufacturer date, you go to a rim shop, they say, well, hold on, we'll see if we can order one, and you, you sit around waiting three or four weeks for them to actually get your vehicle, I mean, get the tire for that vehicle, and the vehicle is sold before it would even get there.
Okay, Mr. Height?
I just, just one, one suggestion is, and this is just kind of throwing something out. Why couldn't we send our photographer out in the morning and have him take a snapshot of all the violations out there and then give you a certain number of days to clear it up? If they're not cleared up in X number of days, then we revoke it. That's my amendment, that's my, that's, that would be my amendment also.
Ms. Ross?
I want to know, are there going to be any operable cars? I mean, I don't want to, I mean, you're telling me there's going to be cars with flat tires there?
No, no, I'm saying...
I don't want to see any tires flat. I want you to promise me that there's not going to be any flat tires.
Um, I promise you...
I want you to promise all of us in the city that there's not going to be any flat tires.
I promise, the city of North Little Rock, if I see one, I'm going to definitely address it. It just, I'm not going to leave it on flat.
That means fix it?
That means if I got to put, if I got three aftermarket wheels and one steel wheel that doesn't go on flat, it's going to have that one steel wheel on it that won't go on flat.
Okay, Ms. Whitby?
I should say, when you have a lawsuit filed, there's going to be a stay for a year, because it's going to take that long for the lawsuit to be over with. What is the hurry tonight? He said he would do what he needs to do to get over to this other lot. It'd be a lot easier, I think, to give him some time to do this now than to wait a year to see what happens in a, in a lawsuit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Whitby?
On the motion, Ross?
No.
Height?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
Ordinance fails.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tiddy, I'm sure that we'll all be driving by there knocking on your door.
Stop doing, say hi to me.
I will.
I like company.
And clean up that other lot tomorrow.
I will.
I'll call you too, Mr. Seville.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate it.
Oh, wow, did I bite into that one? Okay, uh, all right, we'll take public comments on O-1019, and I have Mr. Giles, Ms. Qualls, Ms., Mr. Felton, Mr. Harris, and Jane Cox. Hi, Mr. Giles.
Thank you, Mr. Witcher, members of the city council. My name's Stephen Giles, I'm an attorney. I represent Arkansas Human Development Corporation in their quest for a special use permit to open the Early Head Start Center at 8,000 Industry, Industry Drive in the House Industrial Edition. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I have with me Kim Qualls, the Early Head Start Director, Cleavon Young, who's the Executive Director of AHDC, Rico Harris, the architect for the project, and James Felton, a certified environmental professional and registered geologist who did a Phase 1 environmental assessment for us. This project came to my attention actually after the planning commission meeting, so I wasn't involved with the, with the client before that, but the planning commission turned down their application, and, um, thank you, Mr. Taylor, for sponsoring this special use permit up, too, that we really appreciate your, your help and support on this item. There are a number of people are here in favor of our petition, and, and I'd like just a show of hands, just all those in favor of this special use permit, thank you. The, the center only learned in July 2009 that Early Head Start was going to, to be a sponsor, and they won a national competition that awarded them an ability to place this, this daycare center in North Little Rock, and we're proud to be here as one of your citizens, and it will mean that the livelihoods, 25 full-time jobs depend on this approval of this permit. Our, the Arkansas Department of, I mean, Human Development Corporation already owns this site, they've purchased it, they're trying to comply with your zoning ordinance. I understand the eight conditions that were imposed on the special use permit, and we appreciate those and will comply with those if this permit is granted. Also like to make it known to you that, that the, this use as a daycare center is allowed in the House Edition Bill of Assurance, it's not prohibited. There are certain uses in that Bill of Assurance that are prohibited, but not the daycare center. And of course, your ordinance allows daycare center in I-2 Light Industrial Park as a special use permit, and that's what we're here for tonight. This project, when built, I mean, when, when the renovation is completed on the existing building there, will bring a lot of money into the city of North Little Rock, will bring a lot of jobs, not only the people that'll be working there, but also the people who will be providing products, the vendors will be from North Little Rock, and there'll just be a lot of benefits. The, the only objection that I was heard through my, our people who came to see me were the lot owners and the industrial park in their fear of some, a problem selling their, the lots in the subdivision if there's a daycare center there. I'm not sure I understand that. And if you would, and if there are, is opposition here tonight, I've tried to seek it out, I haven't seen anybody here, but if they are and they're going to speak in opposition, could I just have maybe just a short rebuttal and respond, because I'm really not sure what the objections are? Like I said, we've completed a Phase 1 site environmental assessment, we have the professional engineer here, the geologist that did that report, the report is, is in your packet, it showed no adverse consequences, I mean, situations out there existing on this property or in the surrounding properties. As you can see, the surrounding properties are vacant, and so there's a lot of buffer for the protection of the children that are going to be here. Yes, sir. Okay. Anyway, I'm just sum up, and if I could have maybe just a short rebuttal if there is opposition, and people I introduced are here for answering any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Can we wait until, all right, Ms. Qualls?
Hi, my name's Kim Qualls, I'm the Early Head Start Director with Arkansas Human Development Corporation, and we're pleased to be here. We are excited about this program, we're looking forward to being in the neighborhood and the community, especially of North Little Rock. We would like to get along with our neighbors and be a good neighbor in the area, and we look forward to providing these services. I have pictures of the site and the program, if anybody would like to see those. We also have 200 support signatures from the area, and we have those for you and a summary of the environmental study, if you would like to have those.
Okay, Ms. Ross?
Well, one of my questions, because I did speak to some of the other property owners around there, from the outside of the building, will there be any indication that it's a daycare? I mean, will you know?
Other, other than a logo, and then in the back, we're going to have a very small playground, because we're only serving infants and toddlers, there will only be 40 in the center that we're providing services to. We will have a small playground on the back, and we'll be complying with the request to have a six-foot wooden fence there. Other than that, you will not know that there's a childcare center in the area.
Okay, I think that was some of the concerns, was that they wanted to keep the feel of an industrial park?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if they were worried about pink bunnies or what, out front, but that was one of my questions.
No, we, I have some pictures of our current facility, if you would like to look at those. It's a very high-quality facility, we don't have lots of toys and things thrown out in the yard, and, uh, we don't, we don't have a lot of plastic. One of the things that we're trying to do is make this a LEED certified building, so we're very concerned with the environmental area and the impact that that has, and we feel like that this is a great location, we feel like we would be an asset to the community that would be there and the businesses that are there, and we're looking very forward to be in an area such as that.
Obviously, it's, I mean, I didn't go inside, but I did go out there, and I mean, it's a wonderful location.
I have pictures of it, if you would like to see it.
It's a beautiful location.
We, we loved it, it fit the criteria that we, that we needed for Early Head Start. We have federal mandates, regulations, along with state mandates and regulations. We're operating a facility in Hot Springs, and this site was just, we thought was perfect.
I think another concern was, you know, there's the, the empty lots around that are for sale, what could possibly go in there, and so I went back and I looked, you know, what you could put in I-2. It runs the gamut, it could be anything from a library to a dairy, I guess you could say. I mean, it could be anything, and so we do have, is it Crystal Hill Elementary that's in an industrial park, we have a hospital in an industrial park, so I just, yeah, I don't know. I mean, we do, we already have those things, so I don't see any difference in this one.
Yes, ma'am, we didn't either, and we thought that being in the business community would be a great location, not only for the families we serve, but we thought that we would be given back into the community by providing those services, so that people can work that qualify for our program and to be able to be given back to their area also.
Okay, as far as traffic into the area, how many children did you say you would have?
Forty.
Forty, so...
Forty, it would just be a drop-off and a pickup per day. Since we do serve infants and toddlers, the parents do park, they have to come in, they have to bring their child in, we have security in the facility, both so people can't get in, and we have cameras that'll run all day long so that we can monitor what's going on inside and outside of our building at all times.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson? Or Mr. Taylor?
Oh, Mr. Giles, Alderman Robinson is also a sponsor on this legislation, and she, she has been very zealous in her support, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very zealous.
Ms. White?
I'm also very zealous. As a former Head Start Director like yourself, I understand that you have much stricter guidelines to go by than a, a private daycare might have, and I also know the outside of the buildings, you rarely would know what's in except for that traditional logo that'll be there, so...
Yes.
I, I realize it's, everything is, is just much stricter guidelines that you follow, and the program sounds excellent, especially the extra part that you have for the moms.
We're, we're looking forward to serving the families, and typically, Early Head Start serves about 3% of families that are eligible nationwide, so we feel that this could be a great asset to North Little Rock.
Any other questions?
And also, our, if I may add, our nonprofit corporation will have its headquarters also located in the building.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Felton or Mr. Harris, if you want to come forward and also speak on this, or Please, please identify yourself.
I'm James Felton, and I'm the professional geologist that did the Phase 1 environmental site assessment. And my findings show that the facility, through the databases that I checked, through the site investigation that I did in person, that there's no adverse environmental conditions located on the facility or in the adjacent property. I'll just keep it sweet, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. You know, there was, there was no stains, no history, I ran extensive database of, you know, from Brownfield to Superfund, Circla, Serra, I did all the ADEQ databases, and there was absolutely, there's not been any history of any environmental degradation on the property in its history, and I even looked at topographic maps clear back to 1912, I believe was the oldest one, and I just, I saw that.
You did a Phase 1.
I did a, I did a, an ASTM Phase 1 environmental site assessment, according to the standards, yes.
All right, any, any questions, Mr. Cox? Ms. White?
Yes.
Have you done this kind of study for daycares in the past?
I've never done a daycare, no.
Thank you.
It was fun.
All right, Mr. Cox, all right, thank you. Mr. Felton or Mr. Harris?
I'm Rico Harris, I represent Harris Architecture Room in Hot Springs, and I'm the architect for the project. I also designed the facility for AHDC in Hot Springs, and I can tell you that it's the, it's the most professional, classiest daycare that I've ever been involved with. It's, it's a very tight run ship, and I'm very proud to be involved in the project, and if you have any questions about it architecturally, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Harris? Okay, Mr. Felton, that's, you're the, okay, we, okay, Cox? She, she didn't want to speak? All right, great. Okay, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Robinson, do you want to call this one?
Let's call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use for a daycare center in an I-2 zone for certain real property located at 8,000 Industry Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing a special use for a daycare center in an I-2 zone for certain real property located at 8,000 Industry Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Motion to suspend the rules, place on third reading.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
On the emergency?
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Yes, congratulations, welcome to North Little Rock.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, 119...
Because we read on unfinished business.
Okay, well, we, we still have some more public comments. Okay, we have a couple folks who were here in regard to O-1043, including...
R-1043 or O-10?
R-10.
R-1043. Could you cover O-1001 while you're up here, too, please?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Could you cover O-1001 while you're up, please?
Oh, I've heard, I don't, I don't need to make any comments.
Okay.
Earlier today, I sent, see, R-1043 has for sponsors the two Ward 4 aldermen, yourself and Alderman Height.
Actually, Mr. Cox...
Mr. Carter, would you correct, Mr.?
There's been a corrected version out, they only sponsor right now, but you are correct the way that it was filed, but there was a corrected copy out correcting the sponsors that Alderman Height is not a sponsor.
And when did that happen?
Doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, I think, it was just distributed tonight, so, I mean, it's not...
Okay, well, that's meaningful.
But that was, that was contact I had with Alderman Height, it was an error on our part.
That's meaningful to my comments, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, anyway, I sent Alderman, Witcher, and Height an email today, a lengthy email explaining my position about this resolution. I copied each of the rest of you. If y'all have received that and read it, I will temper my comments, it was a lengthy email.
I did receive it.
I assumed you didn't read it.
I read it.
Oh, okay. Then I'll temper my comments.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Good.
Uh, good. Uh, I'm a founder of the Indian Hills Neighborhood Association. I am a former member of the Board of Directors of the Indian Hills Community Club, shall we call it swimming pool, for clarity, simplification. The Indian Hills Community Club Swimming Pool needs help from the city. They need help to address some maintenance needs on the swimming pool and on the tennis courts and the whole facility. Unfortunately, unlike Lakewood and other subdivisions around the city, the developer for Indian Hills built all these assets, built this infrastructure, built the swimming pool in the early 60s, 47 years ago, but failed to establish a property owners association to provide for the maintenance and upkeep. That's what got us here. That's what got us to this problem where there is no funding mechanism to upkeep, for upkeep of the pool. I would ask that rather than the Ward 4 Alderman or 1 Alderman, rather than resolution be submitted, asking for the city council to contribute money for the upkeep of the pool, that a better means that would have, that would be everlasting, that would be year after year, you wouldn't have to be coming back every year asking the city council to help money, to give money to upkeep of the pool, would be to, for the city to assist the Indian Hills Community Club by perhaps asking the city attorney to assist that Board of Directors in developing a property owner association. And that would provide a fund, a permanent funding mechanism to restore the viability of all, of all those things that were built 50-something years ago. This funding to maintain and to maintain the assets of the Indian Hills Community Club, it just needs to be separate from the sidewalk funds. It's, it's, it's a totally separate need, and the Indian Hills Community Club is not a public entity as much so as the Neighborhood Association is, but that's what I would suggest that. Also, I would suggest that you use, that the use of funds from Wards 4, from Ward 4's sidewalk, drainage and sidewalk funds, that you discuss the use of those funds with the residents of Ward 4, including the Indian Hills Neighborhood Association. This resolution that Mary Whicher, that Alderman Whicher has submitted tonight, I have a number of concerns about it, especially on the heels...
Get a minute.
I don't have 10 minutes?
Three.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not an attorney like the other people doing comments. I recognize that. I'm not, I'm not in the club. Last year, you made a one-time, one-time $25,000 contribution to the Indian Hills Community Club pool. It needed resurfacing. This resolution on tonight's agenda conflicts with that in that you intend to give the pool an additional $25,000. Tonight's resolution fails to address the limiting one-time payment in last year's legislation. Perhaps an amendment would be appropriate. Last year, the access agreement had six conditions.
Okay, that's him, Mr. Fury.
Uh...
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, just for the record, may I have one more minute?
No. Please sit down. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Wilson? Ms. Wilson, before you start, I'll remind you, three minutes.
Okay. I don't think I'll take that. I just wanted to introduce myself as Carla Wilson, the president of the Indian Hills Community Club in the year of 2009. I just wanted to mention, because Robert brought it up, that we are gathering information to work on a special improvement district. That is costly, and it takes a lot of volunteers. And that's our struggle every year, is to get the volunteers to basically do that work in the off-season of keeping that pool open during the pool year. Right now, the, the pool is in great shape, and we're looking forward to a great year that's going to draw new members for 2010 and 2011, and hopefully in the future. So we just appreciate the support that we've got, gotten from the city because of the situation of it not having the correct, I guess, original setup, as Robert said, with homeowners association dues and things like it should have been set up. So we really appreciate your help on that. Are there any questions?
Ms. Wilson?
Now, have y'all considered doing a property owners association? Have y'all looked at that as far as continuing funding?
We have, and I don't have the information in front of me right now. I'm not one of the people really heading that up. But from my understanding, I think it was 51%, or even higher than that, that it's taken to pass something like that, which is, I think, difficult to do. We've also looked at, I guess, similar things that Heritage Park is doing.
Urban Service District.
Excuse me.
Urban Service District.
Yes. And that, that's something that we're just learning about because of, you know, because of them doing that. And from what I've heard, it takes also some legal, legal fees in developing that, but we're looking into that because that might be the more viable solution.
Okay. Curious.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Lassiter?
No comment.
Okay.
No comment.
Okay. Let's see if there's anyone else. All right, my comments, Fury. Okay. Could we call, call that one, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution appropriating $25,000 from Ward 4 drainage funds for maintenance of and public programs at the Indian Hills Community Club pool.
I have an amendment.
You have an amendment?
I guess, I guess I better move, move, move for it in the beginning. Move that we adopt, move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you.
Is on the amendment?
Okay, no. Now we have an amendment, substitution amendment. It removes Mr. Height's name.
Pardon me?
That removes Mr. Height's name.
So move. Just move it.
You, you can vote on that if you'd like. If Mr. Height wants his name removed as a sponsor, I don't think that requires a motion and amendment. He can just ask for his name to be removed. I don't think it requires much.
That was just, that was just a correct or, a mistake that was made last week when my name was put on there.
It was my fault, so. All right, will that, will that work then?
That's satisfactory. He asked to have his name removed.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the original to adopt with Mr. Height's name removed.
But I still have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, the last time we did this, and I, and I know it says Ward Fund Drainage Funds, but that's also drainage and other improvements. It's not just strictly drainage funds. There's, there's several things that can be used for that, you know. Every Ward uses them for different things. There's different things that benefit your Ward. And like I said the last time, you do not have a community center like we do. Every Ward has a community center. You don't have the amenities that we have in our wards. The other question was, there was an agreement last time? Is there an agreement attached to this, or?
Let's see, yes.
Did I miss it?
No.
No.
No, that there is not an agreement attached to this. It does refer to the old agreement, though.
But do we need to attach an agreement?
No.
No? Okay. All right, that's just a question. I mean, I'm okay with it, I'm just curious.
Because it refers to the old one?
Yes.
So it's still in compliance? Okay.
Okay. Sir?
Well, when this was brought up, when you talked to me about it, you know, I had a problem with taking money, you know, drainage money like you. I thought it was, you know, money from drainage, they're using for a swimming pool or something. But my thought was if people showed up, you know, from the Ward and they objected and they were against this, well, and they, they didn't, so, you know, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. I'll let Mr. R speak on O-1022 and O-1017, and then we're, then we're going to move the agenda with your permission.
Good evening, council members. First, I just want to thank the city council and the mayor for giving us a little bit more money back in our electric rates. That's basically, I think, it should be voted on. I know y'all gonna do it because the mayor wants it. The next one is, we have a new gentleman over here, and he's going to do the hot dog stand next door. The other gentleman apparently fizzled out, and I hope you do put the hot dog stand back down on Main Street because it is nice to have. If I understand correctly, and he'll shake his head yes, he's going to have someone there every day. And on Sunday, no Sunday, okay, mistake. He's going to have someone there six days a week. That's Saturday. He's shaking yes. So please vote for that. I would love to have another hot dog stand. I get hungry even though I'm diabetic.
Thank you, Mr. R. Okay. I, I had failed to call Ms. Patterson and Ms. Jenkins, who were here for O-1019, and I'm assuming that they're gone. All right. All right, let's, let's go to the agenda.
Okay, R-1026 is being held until April 26th. O-1001, Alderman Whicher, Ross White and Robinson.
Okay, I think we're, we're going to hold that and ask that it be refiled for the next council meeting. We are, we are going to have, well, the mayor hadn't announced yet, but apparently, we're going to have a special council meeting next Monday at 7:00 PM regarding an issue with the electric department. Do one of y'all need to cover, tell us about that, or is that premature, NITS contract? Okay. All right. But you'll, you'll be notified, we're going to have a special call.
There is a special call Monday?
Well, there, there will be a special call to go out this week regarding next Monday. And Mr. Carter disappears when I need him the most. Story of my life.
And that special call is going to be for?
Next Monday.
For this?
For the NITS.
7 o'clock?
It was electric rates?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, not, not for that one. This is a separate, separate item.
But it has to do with electric rates? Not signs?
No, delivery, delivery. Another deal. Here he is. I'm sorry, Mr. Carter, I started off, okay.
My apologies. There were people from the Indian Hills community who were interested in trying to be organized. I was trying to give them a little bit of guidance.
All right. We, we were talking about O-1001, having it redrawn for the next council meeting, and I'm not sure, has everyone designated their areas and gotten with Mr. Carter to, to cover those areas that you want to have, an option to have changing signs in? I think you two were the only ones left.
If you would get in touch with us at your convenience, we would like to schedule a time to meet with you about our Ward.
So, so the question...
Jimmy said anytime this week besides Thursday.
Anytime this week besides Thursday is good for me. Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon, good for you?
That's fine.
I'll see you Wednesday afternoon, 1 o'clock in my office.
Yeah, Ms. White?
They just announced that that...
24th.
The wastewater meeting with Sherwood was the same night.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, so, so the question is, do you want to have a work session tomorrow night and, and, and we've worked through some of the known, known quantities that we have now? Or are you going to wait next Monday night when we think we're going to be here and, and carry on after that special call? Sir?
I would prefer if, if we waited until Monday night because that would give me the opportunity to get with Ward 3, make sure that all of these districts are developed so that we can isolate the points of contention, quickly get them to settlement. And I think that we'll have a lot better direction in the debate at that point, and, and we can, we can arrive at a conclusion quicker.
Okay, is that, is that okay? Very good.
I'm going to try to have all that done out to everybody before you come to the meeting, so you'll have, you'll have an idea about what we'll discuss.
Okay. All right, Ms. Whitby, I think we're ready to move on. I'm, I'm sorry.
No business, R-1042, Mayor Hayes?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Whitby, let, Ms. Ross and Ms. White.
I just had one question, though. Can we, I mean, the special call meeting, I know this is not, probably not even the point, but can we try to make that meeting at 6 o'clock so that we can attend the wastewater public meeting?
I think that's up to Mr. Carter and the mayor.
I just want that on the record.
Sure.
That's all.
Sure.
That's all.
So it's going to be at 6?
If, if that's the will of the council, then I think that's what we should aim for.
Okay.
I think we'll still have to, I mean, we're still going to have to publish a, a special call. I mean, I don't think this constitutes notice for a special call. We're still going to have to get publication out, but it's, it's good to figure out what time works for everybody.
Okay, no business?
R-1042, Mayor Hayes?
Call it, please.
Resolution to approve the city of North Little Rock's Section 3 plan required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development in regard to the community development block grant program.
Okay, I think we need to, can I have a motion, then I think we need to have a hearing?
Come on.
Second.
Can we talk about it a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Anytime that a city receives federal funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, they're required to utilize Section 3 requirements. In the past, we've done that in our contracts with drainage and street improvement projects with my office. We've included the Section 3 language and the forms and everything. But now, we, we've never have done a plan, and we're required to do a plan. So this plan covers all the requirements, and it's basically saying that if you have a contract for over $100,000 and a contractor needs to hire people, they need to make a, a big effort, and you have to show what kind of effort you've made and prove the effort that you've hired people from the housing authority or people in that project area to your project if they're qualified. Also, there's some training also can be applied to that. So this is just a requirement that the federal government requires us to do.
Any, any questions, Ms. Bowman? Ms. Ross?
I have one question. So are you responsible for keeping up with the contractors, that they've made a good faith effort to do this?
And, and it, it has a lot of forms in the back of this that I compiled, and they have to fill it out. And when they even submit a bid, there's certain forms that they have to fill out if they think they're going to be hiring somebody, they have to fill out a form when they bid on our projects.
So they just added another 3,000 to our projects?
That's right.
For administration fee for them?
Yeah. It's all this compliance, and, and, and we got to make sure, because even the IGs are looking at cities to making sure that if you have a plan, and of course, we have to have a plan, but if you have one, that you follow it, so.
Any other questions, Ms. Bowman? Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Hearing is closed. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
O-1017, Mayor Hayes?
Call it, please.
An ordinance establishing new electric rates for customers of the North Little Rock Electric Department, first reading.
Motion.
Come on.
Second.
Okay.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White? On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing new electric rates for customers of the North Little Rock Electric Department, third and final reading.
You have an amendment?
Yes, we have amendment. We need to submit amendment. Does everybody have it?
Have a second?
Second.
On the amendment?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing new electric rates for customers of the North Little Rock Electric Department, third and final reading.
You have an amendment?
Yes, we have amendment. We need to submit amendment. Does everybody have it?
Have a second?
Second.
On the amendment?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
O1018, Alderman, Taylor and Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of Faulkner Crossing Phase 2 in the City of North Little Rock and related drainage facilities, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
O1020, Alderman, Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of Faulkner Crossing Phase 2 in the City of North Little Rock and related drainage facilities, third and final reading.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
O1023, Alderman, Taylor and Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of Faulkner Crossing Phase 2 in the City of North Little Rock and related drainage facilities, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
O1023, Alderman, Taylor and Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of Faulkner Crossing Phase 2 in the City of North Little Rock and related drainage facilities, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of Faulkner Crossing Phase 2 in the City of North Little Rock and related drainage facilities, third and final reading.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
O1020, Alderman, Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use for sales repair and inventory of pressure washers and accessories in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 5,000 East Broadway in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Motion?
Motion to suspend all the readings and call a question.
Okay.
If you can do that, that's a legal motion. Do we have a second?
Second, I have a question.
Ms. Ross?
On this, in these, in the conditions that are listed, does there need to, is there any concern about outdoor storage, outside storage outside of the building, any repairs outside of the building, does there need to be anything added into that? I didn't know, I mean, it, usually that addresses outside storage in these, and there's nothing in here stating outside storage, so I didn't know if you wanted to add that in as G?
We would, we would take that as a friendly amendment if you'd like to add it, Alderman, Ross.
Well, I don't, I was just suggesting, but it's your ward, sorry. I would like, okay, gee, I'd like to amend this, to add no outside storage or repairs outside, does that work for you?
No.
Okay. You want to second it?
Okay, on the motion, on the...
Hold on, who seconded?
Get a second.
Who seconded that?
Uh...
I'm sorry, applicant's here.
Applicant's here?
The outside storage thing, let's, can we talk about that?
Might not be, might not be reasonable.
Hang on, first off, we gotta get a second.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Hartwick's here, you wanna come up and address that for us, please?
Because his...
Are you right there on the corner of Omega and East Broadway? Yes, ma'am. Well, my name's Tim Hartwick, and I'm the owner of TNT Equipment Company, we've been in business here in North Little Rock for 30 years, and on the, on the motion that you were, or the question that you were asking about outside storage, I agree, but as far as some maintenance outside, there are times when it is necessary to, to do some maintenance outside, and, and the basis of that is that we, we repair pressure washers that come in on trailers, they're gasoline engine drive machines, and there is times when we would have to, we would have to run or operate a washer outside the, the building without, I mean, it wouldn't be imposing on any of our customers, or any of our neighbors, or it wouldn't be something that's creating, creating a disturbance of any kind, but, but to actually have that in wording, I just wanted to really basically ask that there is times when, yes, ma'am, so I don't wanna be misleading, that where would, we would, there would be some repairs outside, and there would be a messy stacked up, but, but when you're talking about a pressure washer, it's a big gasoline engine drive that's on a trailer, gasoline engine motor running, there would be times when it would, that we may be actually repairing that, they have, they have burners on them, we would maybe run that outside, you know, outside.
So in other words, there's nothing other than what you've been doing for the last 30 years?
Correct. Yeah, not adding anything, no, sir, but, but...
And they have burners on them?
Yes, ma'am, they, they hot water, you know, they heat the water, and so there's times whenever, we can't, we can't pull every trailer mounted rig into the facility to actually run it, I mean, it's, but it's, so I just wanted to clarify that, but, but yes, sir, it's no different than what we've done for the last 30 years, we've basically have grown, and we're just trying to build another building, and actually do some cleanup around there, but, you know, to be honest with you, make it a nicer facility to accommodate the walk-in business that we do have, and, and, but I just, whenever you said, now, outside of storage, I understand, you know, on this, on this particular piece of property, it's not like we want to, but now, we are gonna, we do, the back of the building is actually, will be as nail-fenced in it, we'll be, actually, we're gonna tear it down and put a new fence up, but when you said repairs outside, I just wanted to clarify that, there could be a time that, that we are running a machine that would be outside the, the roof of the building, yes.
So are you, you're talking minor repairs, you're not talking about breaking the whole thing down or anything like that, are you, or just, I mean, minor repairs?
That's correct, you know.
So I don't know how to word that, but I, my thing was, I just didn't want parts all over left out during the day, and I'm sure that that's not what you're talking about.
And, and a lot of, a lot of the, yeah, I understand that, yes, ma'am, and, uh, no, we're trying to, we're trying to run a, it's, it's a clean business, it's not, it's not like there's a bunch of filth, trash whatsoever, or what, what have you, but, so, no, ma'am, it wouldn't be like there's parts laying around, or inoperable machines, or machinery or anything like that, no, ma'am, but I just, you know, there are times when we would be running a piece of equipment to diagnose whatever.
Okay.
Outside, outside the four walls of the building.
Sure, sure. Okay, well, then I'd like to pull my amendment?
Yes.
I'd like to pull my amendment, but then I would like to also submit a amendment, no outside storage. Is that okay?
First of all.
So your new amendment is no outside storage?
Well...
Your building, you know, you've, you know, it's basically been a clean operation there, and I am familiar with the building, with this, with this business, and they have been good neighbors, now, when you say no outside storage, he doesn't have a very large building, and, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And those pressure washers, you know, are fairly large, and I really don't have a problem with those washers, precious washers being outside, because he normally kinda backs them up and lines them up, and they are neat, so I really don't have a problem with that.
Can I speak? Are they in the fence, though? I mean, they're fenced in, right?
Yes, ma'am, and, and when you, and that's one thing, you know, I don't wanna mislead, there would be, at times, behind, in the fenced-in area, behind, that, that, there may be trailer mounted, or not just loose, but there may be a trailer mounted machine backed inside the fenced-in area.
In your fence.
Stored.
Would you ever store any outside of the fence, though?
No, no.
Okay.
For security purposes, you know.
Can I pull that last amendment, then, and put no outside storage outside of the fence? Does that?
Perfect.
Does that, that work?
Perfect.
I knew we'd get there if we kept working at it, okay.
So your amendment is no outside storage outside?
Of fenced area, how's that?
Perfect. And, yeah, we, we would, we wouldn't.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I don't know what I think. I'll second it.
Now, I have a quick question, so we have a motion and a second to suspend all readings, then we have a motion and a second to amend, which motion do I call first?
The motion to amend.
To amend.
Precedes the...
Has it been read? Have we read the ordinance?
Been read one time.
Then it's proper for amendment, you can amend it now.
Okay. So on the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
Now, since that was all readings, do I need to read it on a final reading? Then on the emergency?
Yes.
No, you have to move, we have to call for a vote, we have to call for a vote on merits, okay?
Okay.
Oh, so move.
Okay.
Second. Second.
Okay, on the motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
O1021, Alderman, Taylor?
Oh, please call it.
An ordinance to reclassify certain property located at 611 Orange Street in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R3 to a planned unit development, PUD, to allow two zero lot lines by amending ordinance 7697, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
You don't want to suspend them all on this one?
I'm following Alderman Robinson's lead.
Okay. On that motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
An ordinance to reclassify certain property located at 611 Orange Street in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R3 to planned unit development to allow two zero lot line homes by amending ordinance 7697, second reading.
Motion to suspend rules, place on third reading.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
O1022, Alderman, Taylor, Robinson and White?
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use for a hot dog stand in a C6 zone for certain real property located at 304 Main Street in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Motion to suspend the reason, call, to suspend the readings and call a question.
Or second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And whicher?
Yes.
On the motion?
On the motion?
On the motion to adopt, now.
To adopt?
Question?
I just have a question.
What?
Can I ask Mr. Harris? Hi, Mr. Harris.
Hi.
Um, this is not in the, in, in our ordinance or anything, but, um, we did talk about having fresh fruit on this for sale, and that was something you and I agreed to, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Right, and, and I think that's really important, since our city's heading towards a healthier lifestyle, and I was very excited to hear that you shared that passion, and, uh, we can eat hot dogs and have apples, too.
I really thought that was a great idea, and I'm happy to do it.
I thank you.
I thought about, you might wanna know a little bit about me. You know about the hot dog stand, uh, we're gonna have the same Nathan's Premium All Beef. My, my entire lifetime, electrical contracting, I came here in sixty-nine, I grew up in Oklahoma City, came here in sixty-nine, and about mid-seventies, I, when I was elected president of the Oklahoma, I mean, Arkansas chapter of the National Electrical Contractors Association, I was presented with an AIO certificate, now, for the benefit of those that are not familiar, that's official certification that you are an Arkansas Improved Oki. That's my background. I hope you'll approve this, and I want the members of this council, and the clerk's office, and the attorney's office, and the mayor's office, to be my guest to try Bill's Conies at first opportunity.
I have one question.
Ms. Ross.
Are candied apples legal? This is why I want candied apple. Okay, that's not healthy. All right, thank you.
Mr. Harris, remind us when you're gonna be open. When, when are you opening your stand?
Well, depending on your action, probably Wednesday or Thursday of this week.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bag. Don't hesitate, sir, to invite us over to, uh, make sure that the hot dogs are really good.
Quality control.
He just did.
He just did.
Yeah, I guarantee it. Now, can I ask him one thing? You said Nathan's All Beef, are you fixing to have any chicken and their other hot dogs that they're coming out with? Because we do this at our church.
No.
And we've got some of the people that will, they had to have the chicken hot dogs or the turkey hot dogs.
No, you know, past ninety days, I have just about ran off all of my family members and friends tasting different brands and hot dogs, 'cause everybody really have their favorite. We're just gonna have one, it's gonna be an Nathan's All Beef, gonna be unique, and it's gonna be a, have a, uh, coney sauce, it's an all-beef coney sauce that originated, goes back to nineteen thirteen in Michigan. Nothing like it in Arkansas, guarantee it. You, I can't guarantee you'll like it, but I guarantee it's different.
I don't like it.
I've had the Nathan's in Philadelphia.
Yep.
Yep.
No, no option.
Wanna get a motion after discussion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, this is to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height. And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O ten twenty-three Alderman Baggot.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying property located at seven thousand Count Massey's Ro, Count, Count's Massey Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C three to I one classification, amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, first reading.
Uh, before I go on, would you add, uh, Alderman Phillips as a co-sponsor on this, please?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules and place on the second reading, please.
I'll second it.
Okay. On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at seven thousand Count's Massey Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C three to I one classification by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, second reading.
Motion to suspend the rules and place on the third reading, please.
I'll second it.
Hey, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at seven thousand Count's Massey Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C three to I one classification by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, third and final reading.
Ms. Ross.
Do we know why, or what is the request for this, or the purpose of this rezoning?
It is.
Mr. Baggot, do you know?
There's Mr. Vols, he can.
I believe.
Somebody walking in. Here, sir.
Property's on C three, and they're wanting to do a strip center with some, uh, light warehousing-type, uh, uses, uh, there, and they do have an applicant here to answer questions, but, uh, it's there, south of Mall Mall Boulevard, on the east side of Count's Massey, um, right at the edge of the city.
Have you had any calls or anything?
We've not.
Against, you haven't had anything?
Well, we've received none.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baggot.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Okay, any council members have anything they'd like to discuss? Mr. Bag. On the, uh, what we passed tonight about Alderman Taylor's deal, if they don't do what they say they're gonna do, and they're gonna have continued violations and things out there, can we, can we bring that up again, and we can vote on it at a later time? If they, if they don't do what they say they're gonna do, and there's continued violations, I will vote against it next time.
And, and you want us to bring it up, right? After you all voted it down, you all want us to bring it up if they're in violation, am I correct?
Uh, the thing that concerned me about was the lawsuit that they were gonna file, uh, against the city. We don't need anything like that. I would've liked to have held it for, you know, another time, or something like that, but since it went like it did, I just want you to know that I will, I, I mean, I'll, I'll jump on it with you with a co-sponsor next time, if, if you don't, uh, if you don't do what he's gonna say.
He's, he's not gonna comply. I mean, he, he's basically been, been flipping, flipping his nose at us for six months, and now that we, we've gave him carte blanche, he's just, I mean.
If he does, I will, I will, I will promise before the council that I will co-sponsor with you to, to, to shut it down.
Say let them sponsor it.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank the Chamber this weekend for the barbecue on the river, and it was a success, and they had many people there, and brought in a lot of money for the city.
It was, it was a great event.
Chamber did good.
Uh, okay, we, we have two other items. All right, the Women's Club Annual Carcel Ball will be Saturday, the tenth of April, at the Hayes Center. If, uh, you need some tickets, you can call seven five three seven two four six, and the North Little Rock Lions Club Annual Fish and Chicken Dinner, uh, will be April the sixteenth at Burns Park Hospitality House. We'll, we'll have one more shot at that.
And I have tickets for the fish fry. They're eleven dollars each. I would love to sell all of these, so anybody. Yeah, a book would only be a hundred and ten dollars.
Okay. And, uh, I'll, I'll remind you that the census count is going on presently. You should've received your forms, uh, particularly in, in disadvantaged areas, uh, that census is extremely important, because, uh, we get funds to, to help those areas, uh, and, you know, and traditionally, those areas have been undercounted, but we're